All right, it is 6:30. Going to get started. The City of Castle Hills City Council will convene into a regularly scheduled meeting on June 11th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. And the council chamber is located at 209 Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. I'm going to call the City, uh, the Castle Hills regularly scheduled council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Uh, we're going to have the invocation. We get, uh, Mr. Ludwig? You think you can help us with that? I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Pinkston? I got ahead of myself, excuse me.
There you go. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for just being able to invite your presence, your wisdom, your mind into this important meeting tonight. I want to thank you for the mayor and the council as they serve and, uh, just pray that this meeting today would have a good result for, um, just all parties, that you'd meet the needs of our community through the leadership of our council and, um, and that you would just use them to guide and support our city staff and, and, uh, help them, give them wisdom, uh, just solving problems and, and challenges that we face in our community and, uh, looking for opportunities to make this the better and just the best place to live. Uh, I want to pray for, uh, Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Gonzalez as they're continuing to get their feet on the ground and just, uh, welcoming them to the council and just, um, help them as they're, uh, taking their first steps in leading here and, and, uh, we want to take just a moment, God, and just lift up, uh, Officer Munoz and, uh, Officer Earlywine and just, uh, thank you for just being with them in a special way, the good reports we're getting on their recovery, but, uh, God, these officers is just, uh, standing in the line of duty. We, uh, we pray for them in this meeting every month over our city staff and our fire department and police force and, and, uh, God, you just bless those men and help our community to reach back and to support them and to let them know how important, and their families to know how important they are to us and how much it means to us that they, uh, put themselves out there on a daily basis and, and in this case, uh, God, uh, just, uh, the, uh, healing name of Jesus, God, over their lives, just bless them both, bless their families, be with them. And, uh, again, I just thank you. Bring a spirit of unity to this meeting tonight and just bring us together as a community in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. Mr. Ludwig, you think you can help us out with that?
(Inaudible) Jesus Christ, United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move to change the orders of the day and consider immediately, um, number eight and number nine.
I'll second that.
Objection to the consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick.
Um, the rules of order that were adopted in 1995 require 90 days' notice for any revision or change, and that should apply to rescission as well. Uh, the documents are essentially verified by the ancient document rule, Texas Rules of Evidence. Uh, Mr. Smiley, who was mayor some years back, was, was the, uh, mayor who participated in the, uh, proposal to amend them back in, uh, nineteen, uh, 2013, and he has stated that these are the, the original rules of order, that they have not been amended. And the rules of order, order are clear, that they require a 90-day notice for revision or, uh, presumably rescission as well.
Uh, yes, Ms. Gonzalez, we have a point of order.
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez, can you turn your mic on?
I can't hear you, miss. If you turn your microphone on, that'd be helpful.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I have it on now. Uh, I couldn't find where those were voted in. We looked, and there is no place that the city council voted those rules in.
Yes, there is. There's a copy of it in the, in the, uh, it's a res- I believe it's a resolution, but it's in 1995. I have a copy of it, I don't have it handy, but there is a copy in the, uh, city records.
Uh, Mr. Schnell, do you have an opinion on this?
With, uh, due respect to Mr. McCormick, the wording in the current rules of order refers to amendments, proposed amendments. The rules of order shall not be submitted to discussion and vote prior to two regular meetings after their presentation. Um, I had not considered that, um, a, a ro- a vote to rescind them was anon- uh, synonymous with an amendment.
I'm sorry, it was a what kind of amendment?
I'm saying that I did not consider rescission to be synonymous with amendment.
So, in your words, uh, in other words, we can proceed with potentially rescinding the rules of order?
Well, at this point, I'm not sure any action was taken on Ms. Winger's motion. I don't even hear a second to Ms. Winger's motion.
I did second it, sir.
Okay, Mr. Sanderson, seconded the motion. I didn't hear a vote on the motion to move up items eight to nine, and, and we just kind of jumped into a discussion of item eight.
So I'd like to call for the vote.
So I think we first need to go ahead and determine if a majority of the council wants to move these items up on the agenda.
Considering Mr. McCormick filed an objection, I would imagine we need to vote on Mr. McCormick's objection, correct?
That would be fine.
Okay. So, Mr. McCormick has, uh...
But Mayor, again, the objection isn't relevant until the item is moved up. So I think we need to vote on the motion to move these two items up, and then Mr. McCormick can simply restate his objection, and the council can discuss and vote on the objection.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move it up. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes? Okay. So, uh, start with number eight. Uh, discussion and possible action on ordinance number 2019 dash 06 dash 11, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, to grant a specific use permit for microblading on property commonly known as 1931 Northwest Military Highway, 126 Castle Hills, Texas.
Mayor, that's item seven.
I'm sorry.
Again, raise my...
I believe we're on eight and nine.
Again, again, raise my objection to the consideration.
That was number seven.
Hold on one second.
Mayor, you were reading item seven.
Yes, sir.
So if you could just continue reading number seven and move to number eight.
Mr. Schnell, I imagine that we can continue where we're at, correct?
There was a motion made before the mayor announced the announcements, or, uh, the citizen comments on non-agenda items, so that motion, um, has been approved, so the council is on items, item eight, we'll do item nine, and then we'll return to the beginning of the agenda with, um, acknowledgements and presentations, followed by citizen comments on non-agenda items, since the council has voted to move up these other two items.
Okay.
Again, raise my objection to consideration on the same grounds, and that is that the rules themselves require 90-day notice for an amendment. I frankly do not see how Mr. Schnell gets to the idea that going from some rules to no rules is not a substantial amendment in the operating procedures of the council.
I understood, Mr. McCormick. Uh, Mr. Schnell, I'm assuming that your opinion is the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that we're, in that case, we'll proceed with item number eight. Discussion and possible action on resolution number R19 dash 06 dash 11, a resolution rescinding the Roberts, the rules of order of Castle Hills, city council adopted by resolution on November 14th, 1995. Uh, Ms. Winger.
Yes. Um, as a matter of fact, um, I do have some history with this, which the only other person I know of in this room who has is Mr. Schnell. Um, these rules were never in a, put into effect or used at all until this past year. Uh, they definitely were not in effect in 1997, uh, when I began attending council meetings and Marty Rubin became the mayor. So, um, we have always operated under Roberts' rules, and the motion is simply to return to Roberts' rules and rescind these rules.
All right.
I second it.
We have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez? Discussion. Mr. McCormick?
Well, the fact is, apparently, we have not always operated under Robert's rules, other than those specified in the City, City of Castle Hills Rules of Order, which are substantially based on Roberts' Rules of Order. Ms. Winger's proposal to, to suspend the, the rules of order by rescission, uh, smacks to me of the court, of the sort of thing that most petty dictators and tyrants like to do, and that's stifle the press and limit agreement, limit speech that disagrees with them. So I'm opposed to changing the rules of order at this time. I think we need a 90-day period to review the rules of order. I think, uh, it's more appropriate that we, uh, take action to revise these rules of order that we have on board at the moment, which can easily be done if somebody's willing to do it, and I'm willing to do it. Uh, but the, the whole point to Roberts' rules in the first place is to see to it that all members of a group, a convention session and so forth, have an opportunity to speak twice. And if we want to revise those rules of order, which Ms. Winger has proposed to do, by limiting discussion from the public, I think we can do that as well. Uh, it is unusual to have open outcry of motions and objections from the audience.
Point of order, we're only discussing the, number eight at the moment.
Uh, I think it, I think it's pertinent, and I'll continue unless somebody stops me.
I'm, I'm, I'm objecting.
Mr. McCormick, if you could just keep it on item number eight, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, the rules of order are adequate. We've been using them since 1995. There is an order, uh, passing them by the, by the city council in 1995. I obtained a copy of it. It's in the city records, and to say that, that not, that that's not the case is just simply not true, because I've been and looked.
I understand.
And, uh, I'm sorry if you didn't find them, but they're there. It's a one-page order.
Okay. Is that something that you could, uh, provide us if, if Ms. Winger was unaware or Ms. Gonzalez was unaware?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is that something that you can provide if, uh, Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Winger were unaware of the location?
Oh, I'm sure it's in there, 'cause, uh...
No, it's not.
Melissa and I looked at it just the other day.
Well, we're, nonetheless...
I have a point of order, this is giving off the, uh, the beaten boat bass here, I mean, we're still on item number eight. I mean, all these other extra papers and this kind of stuff, I, I believe it's relevant.
I think it's relevant to, Mr. Schnell, I imagine we're look, we're trying to discuss the, uh, original rules of order for the city. I imagine it's, uh, relevant, correct?
It's my understanding that a resolution was adopted by the city council, that a copy of that resolution is available through the city secretary, as Mr. McCormick said, that the rules of order were adopted by a resolution of the city council. I can't remember the exact date, but if he says it's 1995, I'll take his word for it. And it is relevant to item eight to discuss whether the current rules were or were not adopted, so I, if that was what Mr. McCormick was going, I think that is relevant to item number eight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sanderson, you have any comments?
None at this time, thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Um, Rob- Roberts' Rules of Order does not allow people to stand up in their seat and start yelling. It, it is a more organized setup where you go and you sign in, and then you come up here and you speak with a mic. That way, everybody can hear what you're saying, and we can try to resolve any issue you might have.
Off topic.
She has the floor.
Mr. McCormick?
I have a point of order, and I'm entitled to interrupt with a point of order. I think she's off topic. She's not talking about rescinding the rules, she's talking about the problems with the old rules versus the problems of supposedly the new rules.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Ms. Winger?
No, I'd like to call for the vote.
We have...
I second it.
A call for the vote in a second?
Mayor, before there's a vote, um, I believe if citizens have signed up to be heard on item eight, they should be allowed to speak on item eight.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Let me dig through this here. Uh, first on the list is Ms. Amy McLenn. Okay, um, Mr. Paul. Dr. Mike Flynn. I'll remind you, uh, we have three minutes, and Ms. Gonzalez will be keeping time of that.
Dr. Mike Flynn, reside at 111 Amerson Lane. With this resolution, it is evident that Ms. Winger and Miss Gon- Mr. Ms. Gonzalez are not interested in hearing what some citizens have to say, unless, of course, agrees with their viewpoint. I already suspected that, but this proposed resolution confirms my suspicions. They want to limit any citizen's comments to only three minutes and prohibit anybody from else from donating their time.
I'm sorry, that's not the issue at hand. We're not, you're on the wrong subject.
Ms. Gonzalez, can you please quick pause a timer? Mr. Schnell, do we have any concerns with what Dr. Flynn has sent thus far?
This is a time for citizens to speak, the council to listen, and if Mr. Flynn goes a little off topic, it still seems to me to be related to the issue of the rules of procedure.
Perfect. Uh, if council understands that, I would ask Dr. Flynn to please continue, sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, uh, they want to limit any citizen's, uh, comments to only three minutes and prohibit anyone else from donating their time. Conversely, they want citizens to have a single spokesman present their combined comments. Combined comments would be expected to require more time, not less. I realize that three mil- three minutes may exceed the attention span of some members of our council. However, aside from infringing on a constitutionally, constitutionally protected right to free speech, limiting speakers to three minutes while also preventing others from donating their time and, uh, will limit any in-depth analysis. When I prepare my comments, I try to write a succinct draft to keep within the allotted timeframe. Because I try and back up my arguments with references and observations, I sometimes go long. When I do, I appreciate it when somebody else supports my suvit- position sufficiently that they are willing to donate their time. If this resolution passes, I recommend in the future, anybody else who wants to make a lengthy comment, also prepare a written text. That way, if they exceed their time limit, they can simply pass their comments on to a willing volunteer to keep reading, unless, of course, that gets changed, too. Regardless, whatever council decides on this resolution will not matter. I believe that most members of this council and many of the citizens of this community are so entrenched in their positions and opinions of others that no amount of discussion would persuade them to alter their views. In that regard, addressing this council is simply a waste of time and effort. So I say that I think that the time of her talking is over, and that the time for taking action has arrived. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Uh, next we have Brother William Dooling.
Counsel, uh, Brother William Dooling, 201 Gladiola Lane. And, so I really haven't had a chance to see the meat behind these, like the actual proposed ordinance, so I, you know, and I, I guess people can do that, but I think it would be helpful if, if somebody would actually at some point read the proposed, um, ordinance with all of its detail. Um, it just says here, uh, to rescind the, but I guess I'm really talking about the next one, but, but the point is, if you don't know what it is you're talking about, it's kind of hard for people in the audience to follow, 'cause you all have read that, I guess, 300 pages, but it's a bit much, so...
I, I think that was premature. Please continue, Brother Dooling.
Oh, do three minutes, thank you. What I really wanted to say was that I remember back in those days, I moved here in 1998, and there was, and I know that Perry Burnham at one time was the parliamentarian, and he made, uh, you know, when the things came up, whether it was proper or not, it was deferred to him. I think that would be a far better way to approach things, as somebody who, um, is an expert in, in what Mr. McCormick referred to as the proper procedure for organizations, rather than arbitrarily deciding, well, we like this person and we don't like that person. Um, I think it needs to remain on topic, germane, and, and organized and civil fashion, and having a parliamentarian. Now, of course, the city attorney can fulfill that function, but I do remember, um, I wasn't here in 95, but I do remember Perry being the, uh, parliamentarian when, when necessary. So I think, um, personally, I don't care whether you rescind them or not, I don't even know what they are, um, and I have a suspicion some of you don't either, but I, anyway, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Next we have, um, Moreta Scott.
Good evening, Moreta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. Um, I have issue with number one. It says Robert, uh, Rules of Order of City Castle Hills, adopted by resolution. Um, there's some, seems to be some debate up here whether or not they were actually adopted or not. Um, if they were not adopted, then there does seem to be a need to rescind them if they don't exist. However, I have a copy of the Rules of Order of the City of Castle Hills that was given to me, um, when I was sworn into office, uh, when I started my council in 2017, 2018. So they exist. I question whether or not you need to rescind them, if you're saying they don't exist, but there's a copy of them right here. And they are very thorough in how our meeting should be run. They're very clear, they're very concise, and basically all they're doing is they're taking Roberts' Rules of Order, which is a book about this thick, and condensing it for easy use for the city council members, particularly those who aren't already versed in Roberts' rules. My issue with number two is that it says, "To all city council meetings shall abide by Roberts' Rules of Order until such a time that other orders, uh, they may adopt other rules of procedure." My concern here is, within this resolution, there is no addition to which version of Roberts' Rules of Order that are going to be used by the city. There are many different versions of Roberts' rules, so which addition are we going to be using? It's not clear here in this resolution. So if I go to Barnes and Noble and I buy a copy of Roberts' rules, and it's different than the one that council's using, because they're using a different edition by a different publisher, I do not want to be punished by council, potentially by number three, by disrupting them and being subject to Texas Penal Code number 42.05. Would you refer to Penal Code 42.05? It concerns disorderly conduct and related offenses in a public place. This may be a public place in the sense of the city council meeting, but it's also a political place, where we talk politics and we talk the policies of our government. Now, my free speech is protected by the U.S. Constitution and the Texas State Constitution to freedom of speech, particularly under political speech. So I do not think Chapter Two qualifies as disorderly conduct in a public place, when this may be a public place, but it's a political public place. And by, um, referring all of our citizens to possibly a class B misdemeanor, if they fall under disrupting the meeting in this public place, you are then violating their freedom of speech, because this public place falls under a different category of public place than Chapter 42 covers. So I'd like you to, uh, answer those questions for me. What version, if you're going to change the version to Roberts' rules, which addition are you going to use? And I strongly disagree that what you're citing on Chapter 42 has anything to do with a political meeting of the city council, but only public places and public gatherings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, we don't have anybody else signed up. Uh, Mr. Schnell. Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick? Can you turn your mic on? Mr. McCormick, can you turn your mic on?
All right. I can't hear myself anyway, so it doesn't much matter to me. Um, the proposed resolution does not identify which rules of order are referred to. There are at least a dozen available on the shelves over at Barnes and Noble right now. The one that is most commonly used by parliamentarians is Roberts' Rules of Order Newly Revised, 11th Edition, and I obtained that from Jim Slaughter, who is a professional registered parliamentarian, just, uh, yesterday or day before. So I suggest that we amend the resolution to refer to that. I'd point out that there is Roberts' Rules of Order for Dummies, Roberts' Rules of Order in Modern English, modified substantiated vari- variable rules of order on half a dozen different authors' names, but all are Roberts' Rules of Order because it is in public domain. But, uh, the official used by, by registered parliamentarians is Roberts' Rules of Order Newly Revised, 11th Edition, and I propose to ch- to insert that where it says Roberts' Rules of Order in the proposed resolution. Propose it as an amendment.
Is, is that a motion, Mr. McCormick?
Motion to amend.
Mr. Schnell, can I, I know you had some comments.
Well, coincidentally, I have in my hand Roberts' Rules of Order Newly Revised, 11th Edition, and I agree with Mr. McCormick and Ms. Scott that it would be beneficial to be very specific and to, uh, for the council to seriously consider Mr. McCormick's amendment for that reason.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor of Mr. McCormick's amendment? Motion passed unanimously? Okay, now we, uh...
Call for the vote on the motion.
Okay, call for the vote on the original item?
Mayor, I have a point of order, please.
Mr. McCormick, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Schnell.
Uh, Mayor, it's appropriate to vote on the motion as amended now.
Okay.
That becomes the, the new motion, which includes the language Mr. McCormick has, um, requested be added, that the council has voted to add to, um, section two of the resolution. Uh, you can now address the point of order, give it specified.
Yes, sir.
May I first, I...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I called the point of order that I questioned the, uh, this agenda item has not been properly posted, in that the rules of order, the specific rules of order, were never cited, and so the, the public was never properly informed of what this agenda item was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Exquire. Mr. Schnell, any comment to that?
Um, one at a ti- one at a time, Mayor.
Yes, sir, please.
Um, the result, the, the agenda item for item eight says that it would be discussion and possible action on resolution number R-dash nine, R19 dash O6 dash 11, a resolution rescinding the rules of order of the Castle Hill City Council, adopted by resolution on November 14th, 1995. I believe that is specific to tell the public what rules of order the city council is considering rescinding.
Perfect. Thank you. Please state your point of order.
Mr. Mayor, I have a further point of order, if I may. Um, your heading, Mr. Schnell, does not say that we're going to adopt any rules of order to replace the current rules of order being rescinded. And so, based on your comments previously, I believe that the notice is improper under the Open Meetings Act, as Mr. Exquire pointed out.
Mr. Schnell, any further comments?
I, I believe that the resolution adequately tells the public what is going to happen, and if, if Mr. McCormick wants to make a motion to eliminate the second section of this ordinance, of this resolution, and bring, we'll bring it back in, in July with the proposed adoption of the Roberts' Rules of Order Newly Revised, 11th Edition, we can do that. Um, I, I think that the resolution does tell the, the, the agenda item tells the public what's going to happen. I, I have no objection if he were to want to remove section two about the specifying the, abiding by Roberts' rules of order, and that can be brought back at the July meeting.
No offense, Mr. Schnell, but I'm not going to do that. We had so much trouble dealing when we actually had set the rules of order, that I really don't trust the council with no rules of order whatsoever, nor the public for that matter.
Okay, sir, uh, please state your point of order.
Joe Rodriguez, 110 South Gardenview. It's a little alarming to me, you're trying to bring things to order, and this is almost like being at the circus, where these heads pop up everywhere and it's like whack-a-mole. Council meetings haven't been like this in the past, historically?
Actually, they have.
And my point directly to this is when you, as an example, exactly what the city's using, Tyler Technologies, hopefully you're using the latest piece of software all the time, because you're trying to be compliant. It's almost, I don't want to assume, almost automatic, that if you're using the latest piece of software, you would use automatically the latest documents and the latest version of Roberts' Rules of Order. It's almost like a given from a standpoint of all the municipal tools that are being utilized in a municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Schnell, so we go vote on the amended motion, is that correct?
Unless there is another amendment to be made.
Okay, so do we, can... Okay, so do we, what was that, Mr. Gregory?
Oh, we already voted.
We voted on the amendment, but not on the original.
The main motion.
Not the motion with the amendment.
Correct. Okay. All in favor? All opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Abstain, motion passes. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on resolution number two zero one nine dash zero six dash one one, a resolution rescinding Robert's Rules of Order of Castle Hills, city council adopted by resolution on November fourth, nineteen ninety-five.
Mayor, that was item eight. We need to do item nine.
I'm sorry, mine's misnumbered here. Discussion and possible action on resolution number two zero one nine dash zero six one one dash A, a resolution to the city council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, establishing rules for citizen participation at meetings of the city council. Ms. Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the reason that we brought this forward is because we have had complaints from citizens throughout the campaign and since they felt that they were being intimidated by a small group of people who were, you know, constantly jumping up at meetings. I think Mr. Rodriguez just referred to it as whack-a-moles. It creates disorder. It intimidates people. And they feel that they're being bullied. So it seemed, you know, logical to come up with specific rules, which I will say that I'd like to thank Mr. Schnall for his thoroughness in, you know, researching this as well as he did and providing all of the details. And it basically speaks for itself.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Again, I'm going to object to the consideration. Problem is that we already have rules of conduct for the citizens based on a resolution passed in nineteen ninety-nine. There is no reference to the resolution. There is no savings clause with regard to any conflict that might exist in the resolution. So I have to say I object to the consideration because we failed to go back and do our research in the past.
Mr. Schnall?
I was not aware of any resolution on citizen participation in meetings from nineteen ninety-nine. If such exists, I would like to see that resolution in order to determine whether the proposed new resolution would be in conflict with it or otherwise inconsistent. Therefore, if that's, if such a resolution exists, it would be appropriate to table this item until the city manager and the city attorney could review the resolution Mr. McCormick is referring to.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the city attorney.
May we table the item to allow research in existing resolutions?
We have a motion to table by Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second? I'll ask again, do we have a second? Motion fails for lack of second. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to ask Mr. Schnall a question. If we adopt this resolution and we find there is some older resolution, does the newer resolution automatically cancel out the older resolution? Or have you got to be specific in canceling out the older resolution before you adopt the newer one?
Well, it really depends on the wording of the older resolution, among other things. But generally speaking, the council would have to abide by both resolutions. I don't think it would automatically cancel the previous resolution, although again, without having read this nineteen ninety-nine resolution, I can't speak to that. I can only speak to, you know, what was, what's on the agenda tonight and the wording of that agenda and the wording of that proposed resolution on participation. So again, absent being able to read the nineteen ninety-nine resolution, all I can tell you is both resolutions would be, and if this one is adopted, both resolutions would be in force. And our job would be, Mr. Rapley's and my job would be to try and reconcile them so that the council has guidance. And where if a correction needed to be made or some dis- difference between the two needed to be either reconciled or dealt with, it would have to be dealt with at a future meeting. Again, tabling this until that opportunity is given is an option.
Can we rescind the old one and accept the new one?
Not under this agenda item.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. As a matter of fact, that is the question exactly that I had asked Mr. Rapley. And I received a response from City Secretary Melissa Gonzalez. Can anybody hear me? Because I've had some problems with this mic.
I hear you.
Okay. Who informed me that there is no record of any subsequent rules after ninety-five. I believe, you know, having done the research myself, that the confusion occurred because when Mr. Smiley was mayor in twenty thirteen, he's the one who raised this and referred to nineteen ninety-nine. But nobody has ever seen any rules from nineteen ninety-nine. He raised it in June of twenty thirteen. He raised it again in one of the budget meetings, interestingly enough, in a budget meeting in July, the following month. And then in another budget meeting later in July, he pulled it. So we don't know of anything that exists from nineteen ninety-nine.
Mr. Smiley, actually, Mr. Smiley, if I may respond.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick.
Okay, Mr. Smiley refers to that nineteen ninety-nine resolution concerning behavior, not the rules of procedure, which are a separate item, just like you got them here in your proposed resolution, but the rules for behavior of participants or audience at city council meetings. That's what he referred to in the nineteen ninety-
Nobody can find them.
I'm sorry, let me finish.
Ms. Winger, if you could let Mr. McCormick finish?
He referred to that. I have a copy of the November fourteenth, nineteen ninety-five resolution passing the rules of order. So I have, I have some question about the thoroughness of any search that might have been done since we were, you were unable to find this nineteen ninety-five resolution. So I think it's appropriate to do, to do diligence before we enact another set of rules on top of ones we already have.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Do I have a motion to proceed?
I'm sorry?
Yes, a motion to proceed?
Yes, call for the vote.
Okay, Ms. Winger, call for a vote. A second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor? I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Do you have people signed up to speak?
I think we do have some. Let me see here. Ms. McLean, have you backed yet? Nope. Mr. Paul? No. Bonnie Hopkey. Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, ma'am, the motion to table failed.
There was no motion. There was a motion to table and that failed, and there was no additional motion after that.
So we're going to have citizens be heard and then we'll vote on it?
I understand, but there was a vote called, so you're correct.
Mayor, I think what Ms. Gonzalez is saying is that a motion to move forward is not a motion to do something.
Right.
And so after the citizen comments and after the council has an opportunity to hear and reflect on the citizen comments, a member of the governing body can make a motion in regard to the resolution, which is the subject of item number nine.
Okay. Ms. Hopkey, please proceed. Three minutes.
Bonnie Hopkey, one eleven Amerson. I have some concerns about this whole thing. First, as Dr. Flynn had mentioned previously, the three minutes and the inability of somebody to give up their time. My second concern is item number, paragraph number F on public comment, that any person desiring to be heard by council on any matter should be during that part of the meeting reserved for public comment, which will be placed at the end of the agenda. I don't know what that means. Does that mean that when you're done and have voted on everything on this agenda, then you'll hear the citizens? If that is the case, then it's obvious by the very words, in addition to your actions, that you just don't care what citizens have to say. And I find that appalling by any of you sitting up there, that you would put forth something that says, "I don't care what you have to say." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkey.
The last part of F addresses your concern.
Brother, I'm... Mr. Schnall?
The language says during a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. If you look, there are items on here that are called public hearings, and you open the public hearing and you close the public hearing. This is an agenda item. And it says that nobody gets to talk until at the end of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkey. Brother William Dooling?
Brother William Dooling, two zero one, Gladiola Lane. I'm just, like a lot of people sitting in the audience, quite mystified as to what you all are talking about. I have the item, we're on number nine, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I have that doc on my phone here, and I read it. And there's all this discussion about what's impolitely been referred to as whack-a-moles, which are people exercising their constitutional rights. And somehow you want to stop that, it appears, because you think it's improper and polite for people to exercise their constitutional rights. However, under the current rules of order that you just threw out that are based on Robert's Rules of Order, it says that an objection to consideration is what the aforementioned whack-a-moles have been making, that under number two, any citizen may object to the consideration of a matter by the council when the matter is in question and is first introduced and before debate. So that's what people have been doing. And it, I believe it's in Robert's Rules of Orders, and I would defer to Mr. Schaal because he has the book. I don't. But I just don't understand how a governmental body could take something that's in standard practice in every community, the U.S. government and down the line, according to Robert's Rules of Orders, and say, "Well, no, we're not going to do that." It's there, and you think this motion is going to stop it? Well, it's not, because if it's in Robert's Rules of Order, anybody can object to the consideration. And Ms. Winger brought this upon herself with Ms. McLean during the last council tenure. And this began to be used more and more to stop things before they got too far down the road based on constitutional rights and other considerations. So, and this thing about where it is on the agenda is not in this motion. So I'm just very confused about that sort of thing. But if you're trying to stop people from objecting to consideration because it's not proper, this isn't going to do it, and we're not going to let you do it. Thank you.
Ms. Moreta Scott?
Moreta Scott, I live at two oh seven Prince Drive. I have several issues with this particular item. One, the first objection is under item B, signing the register and the time limit. Basically, if for any reason you're late to a meeting, it's stating that you and are not have, not here in time to sign up to speak, forget it. You don't get to speak. In the past, our mayor has taken great lengths, if for some reason someone comes in late, to have the consideration to allow a citizen to speak on a topic, even if they're not signed up on it because you don't know what's happened. They may have had a flat tire on the way here. They may have had something happen. So by requiring people to get here early enough to sign a register to be heard, and if they are not here in time to sign it, forget it, once again, you're cutting off the citizen's ability to speak, which is appalling to me that you are trying to restrict the citizen's ability to speak to you. This is one of the few times, once a month, that we can stand here and speak to you, the council, and you listen to us. Because if we try to call you or email you, some of you do not even have emails that you acknowledge or answer, some of you will not give out phone numbers where we can reach you or return calls if they're left at the city hall. So this is our place to speak to you, and you're trying to deny us the ability to do so. So one, I have a problem with having to be here in time to sign the register. If the mayor should graciously allow someone to speak, if they get here late on an item, that has been working fine in the past. The other problem I have with this is that no longer can anyone pass on their three minutes of time. That's just graciousness. If someone is giving a compelling reason why they either agree or disagree with something council is doing, and they're not quite yet done, and someone else has signed up, and what the person is saying is exactly what they wanted to say, and they want to hear the end, why not allow them to have the extra time to finish? Why cut them off at only three minutes? That concerns me. Also, E, it says if several speakers have a same or similar common interest, it's encouraged that they select one person to speak for everyone within three minutes, and that's it. No. I served on council. I sat up there for over an hour one time where twenty, over twenty citizens berated me about something they didn't like that I did. Y'all should have thick enough skin to be able to sit up there and listen to person after person after person get up and tell you what they like and they don't like. And if you don't, then you shouldn't be sitting up there, because that's part of your job, to listen to us as citizens. So to cut us off at only three minutes, not allow anyone else to give us extra time, and then say if everyone wants to speak about the same thing, we'll just pick one person and speak three minutes and be done with it. I have a very hard time with that. I think it is just not civil. The other issue I have a problem with is, thank you, it's on my time.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. I do have a question. Is, Ms. Winger, does this mean that citizens will not be allowed to speak on individual items anymore?
No, it doesn't. It, where this whole thing came from, and I would like to say that this is a very, very difficult thing for me to bring forward, because I did attend meetings for two years after I first moved here. Nobody was allowed to speak. That's why I don't believe that the rules that, you know, we've been presented were ever passed in ninety-five, because Mr. Rubin was on council in ninety-five. But basically, we have been listening to citizens, not at council because they haven't been coming because they felt intimidated and bullied. But, but we have walked all over the city for several months, and I know you did too, so we all heard different things. One of the things that we kept hearing was that these meetings were too long, that they didn't want to hear from all of the people who were constantly, the very small group of people who were constantly speaking about everything. And they wanted the meetings to get shorter and to move on and to deal with government. Mr. Schnall, as you may know, represents several cities. And he pointed out that, that in other cities that he's represented, citizens are allowed to speak only and citizens to be heard. I consider this particular resolution to be a timeout. I am not thinking of it as something permanent, but simply something that we need to do for the present to satisfy the majority of citizens who feel intimidated and bullied. And we will then, you know, have some workshops and come up with some rules where we can move forward that will be more satisfying. But we need this timeout because we have had so many complaints about the way the meetings are being run. Thank you.
So again, my question is, citizens will not be allowed to speak on individual items during this?
Under citizens to be heard, they will.
But, but not on individual items, though, correct?
Well, I thought I just answered that. They can speak on individual items under citizens to be heard.
Right, but cumulatively, but not individually, correct?
I'm not sure what, what you're saying.
As in, I would say item number one, and then whoever would come to speak.
You can, you can speak if you can want to, you know, get up and you can take your three minutes. And by the way, in any case, if a council member, and this has always been the case, wants to hear something further, the council member can make a motion to hear somebody for a longer period of time. somebody for a longer period of time. Um, but for simp, for, what's happened here is that you have people donating their time, and you have somebody getting up, and I think Mr. Flynn made a very good point, he writes his things down, but some people don't, and they tend to go on and on and on and on, and they're not really saying anything new. And it's disturbing to pe, to the public. It's not, it's disturbing to us, it's disturbing to the public that they're coming here to see things getting done, and they're not. They're having to listen to people go on and on and on in the audience. So it's not a question of not wanting to hear from people. First of all, people can always submit things in writing, they may be brought up by council members, but the fact is, in this particular case, people can talk on any item they want in Citizens to Be Heard.
And-
Till we make the change, as they say. I don't think of this as something that's going to go on for more than a few months, just so that we will have a timeout and everything can get back to normal.
And you, and you want the citizens to be heard at the end of the agenda?
Well, yes. At the present time, that's what we're voting.
I take a little bit of concern because we won't be able to hear people's thoughts before we vote. Is that correct? I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding this, I'm sorry.
Most certainly, they can write them down, submit to us, as they have done here on, on at least one or two items that I'm seeing here. So certainly, they're able to go and express themselves in a written fashion.
Frequently.
And, you know, that's, I think that's certainly acceptable for this purpose.
Okay, I, I would disagree, that's my opinion. Uh, Mr. Gregory, yes, sir?
There is no constitutional right to talk or speak. As new members of council get, when we got your new member handbook, I was surprised to find out in that handbook, there is no right for people to speak. None. It has to be granted by the city. But Mrs. Hopkey had a good point. Is she, is she here or not? I would like to amend this section F, which I think it may address all these various concerns. On the fourth line, after the word "hearing," I would add "or agenda items." And at the end of the sentence, on the fourth line, I would add "or an agenda item." So adding "or an agen, an agenda item" in those two places, I think will, uh, take care of all the concerns that people feel that they want to speak on an item when it comes up. If it's an agenda item, they can speak on it.
Excuse me, can you repeat that again? I, I didn't fully understand. Give you those two modifications, can you repeat that?
The two modifications, add the words "an agenda item," and it can be found on the third line after the word "hearing," and at the end of the word "hearing" on the fourth line, "or an agenda item," and, "or an agenda item" in both places.
May I speak on that?
Ms. Winger, yes, ma'am.
Yes. The, the problem, Mr. Gregory, is that that takes us right back to where we are right now. So that's why it's not in there. Because, because that means that we, that we will constantly have a small group of people who will be taking the time of the public that wants to come here and listen to the, to, to the council move on with its business. So as I said, you know, this is simply something that we're instituting now, if it passes, as a timeout for, you know, two, three months at most, and then during that time, we can meet and we can revise it in a way that will make it, you know, work a little more smoothly. But right now, as you point out, there is no right that's given for people to speak. So here, we're still retaining the right for people to speak, and of course, they have the right at public hearings. If we go back to speaking on each agenda item, we're back where we are right now.
Mr. Schnell?
Uh, Mr. Gregory made a motion to amend, it needs a second, and then there can be discussion. We seem to have skipped over the second.
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. McCormick.
But I have, I have some comments.
Mr. McCormick, go ahead.
Uh, first of all, if we're going to move public comments to the end of the agenda, that makes whatever the public has to say pretty much moot with regard to that item on the agenda. It means that you don't get the opportunity to present your, your thoughts to the council before they vote on whatever the item is about which you're concerned. And that's a problem. I think we already have rules to deal with it. The problem, as always, Ms. Winger, has been that we have never enforced the rules. The, the plain fact is, the rules we have now allow them, allow the mayor to cut off discussion when it becomes out of line or, or inappropriate for the, for the topic under, under discussion. And the mayor pro tem, which by the way is you, has the obligation to act if the mayor fails or refuses to do his duty. And so you've had the power right along to cut off these comments whenever you wanted to, if you had the cojones to do it.
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody's going to question that last part, but I would say this. Um, I, I think what you're suggesting, I, I know what you're saying, but what you're suggesting is that you would actually have two presiding officers up here at the same time. I'm in favor of order, not disorder. There cannot be two presiding officers operating at the same time.
There's not intended to be two presiding officers.
The presiding officer, excuse me, let me finish, let me finish, I didn't interrupt you. The presiding officer is the mayor. Um, if he fails to act, then council can overrule him, not simply have another presiding officer speak up.
Well, it's pretty clear what-
That would create disorder.
...state law says about that. The state law is clear that the, the mayor pro tem acts whenever the mayor fails or refuses to do his duty, and that's a pretty clear statement, seems to me. It doesn't, it doesn't mean we have to have two presiding officers. It means that, I think you're authorized to interrupt-
At this point of order, I think this is going to be for some other time here, and we should let other people make a comment.
Okay, your point of order, can you clarify that, Mr. Sanderson?
Yes, I mean, I, I don't think this is really the place or time to go and to make discussion about, you know, what are the procedures, you know, in the, in the body here. I mean, it seems to me that we have items up to, for folks to speak on and vote on.
Okay, was there, is there any more discussion? I have a comment that I would like to make. I, I see it as, this is the residents' council chambers, and the residents are here to talk. They're not here just to listen to us, talk to each other. And I think it's important that they should be able to offer their opinions and tell us what they want, because they're elected to represent us. And just because they're elected to represent us doesn't mean they have to do, that we have to do whatever we want. We should hear from them, and we should take into consideration their thoughts, whether or not they were able to send a letter or get special permission to talk. I, I vehemently disagree with that.
Well, I, and I agree, and I agree with you, but as I said, this is, this is what we don't need, and this is what people are objecting to, is this carnival atmosphere that has, you know, come to pass in the last year, that did not exist previously. When I was on council in twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen, this did not happen. The whole opening up of the Citizens to Speak, which as Mr. Gregory correctly points out, is not required by law, was started by my husband in nineteen ninety-nine, when he became mayor, which is why it's so difficult for me to take this action, and why I emphasize, this is a timeout. This is not something that I view as being permanent. It's simply, we need to have time to put together the right rules and give everybody some breathing space, and it has come from the majority of citizens. It wasn't my idea, but I was prevailed upon over and over and over again to do something, and that's why I put it on.
So would you offer a ending timeframe, like a sunset on this?
Yes, um, September.
September?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gregory, did you have a comment?
I'm just looking up something. Go ahead.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Gonzalez?
We can get it done earlier, earlier, but certainly by then.
I have a comment.
Mr. Sanderson, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, yes, certainly the citizens during this timeout period can, can email us, call us, you know, put together their arguments, you know, and write things down that they want done. This is not a squelching, this is a, this is an encouragement for other folks who feel intimidated by a process, which I believe has gone wrong, to come in here and express themselves properly. Um, as Ms. Winger had pointed out, uh, same experience I had. When I talked with folks, they felt like this was a circus, and they didn't want to be part of it. And this is a measure which I, I am not happy to do, but, you know, this is something that I, I'll be right up front, I support it, in order to go ahead and give folks, you know, time, like a breather, and to move forward with a better structure where folks feel much more comfortable in, in expressing themselves in public. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
In our last meeting, it was a circus. There were people yelling out in the audience, and they were not staying on the subject matter. They were sending out insults that were unnecessary. And if someone has a problem with me personally, I'll be happy to talk to them after the meeting. They don't have to voice their opinion publicly and take other people's time. We're here to do business for the city. We don't get paid. We want to work to make things better for all of our citizens, whether you voted for me or you didn't vote for me. I represent you, and I want to work for you. Thank you.
Mr. Schnell, do you have anything?
So now we need to make a motion, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That he said it hadn't been.
Okay.
I made the motion, Mr. Uh-
There's a motion to amend pending before the council, to add the phrase, um, "and an agenda item," um, after the word "hearing" on lines three and four of subpart F of the proposed resolution. That is what the council should act on before doing anything else.
Okay, so can we take a vote on that agenda item? All in favor of Mr. Gregory's amendment? All opposed? Amendment fails? Okay, now we're going back to the original, is that correct, Mr. Schnell?
Yes.
This is where, if I'm correct, Ms. City Secretary, you want a motion? Did you say, okay. So, so I, I move to approve item nine.
Okay, we have a first by Ms. Winger. We have a second. A second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes?
What was, what was the vote?
Uh, it's three, two. I would like to pull forward item number sixteen. Uh, deliberation and possible action on the employment evaluation assignment duties discipline or dismissal of the city manager utilizing the two-page evaluation form as approved at the October fourth, twenty eighteen, special city council meeting, posable executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven four Personnel Matters, and/or Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, Mr. McCormick.
Second.
Hi. Uh, point of order to that vote, I think it's inappropriate, and I oppose.
Can you turn your microphone on, Mr. Gregory?
Point of order to that ruling, I think it's inappropriate, and it should be allowed to stay where it is.
I'm sorry, did you call for a vote, Ms. Winger?
I seconded, I seconded your motion. So yes, we can call for a vote on your motion. Well, you can't make the motion.
I thought we were going to go into the evaluation now.
Yes.
I was giving Mr. McCormick a chance to, uh, I guess preface this if necessary, or do we just go straight, uh, straight into the evaluation? Mr. Schnell?
Mr. Gregory has made an objection to moving this item forward, therefore takes a vote of a maj, of a majority of the council to move this item up on the agenda to be considered next.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we have Mr. Gregory's objection. All in, uh, in favor of Mr. Gregory's objection?
No.
It's, uh, two, all opposed? Okay, so that fails, Mr. Schnell?
If Mr. Gregory's motion to, to object to moving this forward has failed, then your request to move it up to be considered now is the next agenda item, so you're on item sixteen.
Perfect, thank you. So we can proceed with the evalu, uh, the evaluations, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would like to remind you that, you know, um, we tabled this based on the fact that we had already had, um, citizen comments, and of course, you know, we wouldn't have them now anyway, based on our, so now we're simply proceeding with the evaluation of those who didn't do an evaluation.
Okay. Um, Mr. McCormick, would you like to start?
No, he's already done his.
Yes, I have a, I have an objection to the item.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we, we've, uh, looked at this for several hours last time. Each member of the council has already had at least two opportunities to speak and some three. So I, I think it's appropriate that we, that we discontinue this, this process. Uh, I've looked at, at the history of evaluation procedures, and this is not one. This is not an evaluation by any stretch of the imagination. It appears to be done more like an inquisition or something else, and we're just waiting on the pressing of stones to reach the right weight to get the decision that's desired. The fact is that the U.S. Army has been doing standardized evaluations since eighteen ninety, and the other services followed along. Now every service is doing standardized evaluations, includes the Army, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, and Public Health Service. The Office of Personnel Management and the American Management Association, Society of Association Executives, and many other organizations that deal with management of personnel have looked at what's required. The Army and the other services say it takes a hundred and twenty days of actual observed performance in order to be able to do an evaluation. The American Society and, uh, of Association Executives and the AMA, and the Society of Human Resources Management, all say that actual observed performance is, is a standard characteristic to be evaluated. We have people now who are purportedly doing an evaluation, who have no basis for that evaluation and actual experience evaluating or supervising the person to be evaluated. So I think it's appropriate that if we're going to do this at all, let's go on and do a vote on the council's decision about whether we have confidence in Mr. Rappley or not, and proceed with that, because the evaluation is a colossal waste of time, and we shouldn't spend any more time on it. So I move that we vote directly on, uh, the dismissal on the basis of, uh, lack of confidence, and proceed with that, because that's what you people seem to want to do to begin with. I think it's pretty clear. I have a, a commentary from one of our constituents, or two of our constituents, Henry Davidson and Rob Moore, which I'd like to read into the record.
Well, excuse me, excuse, but I think we, we've already, you know, had a comment from the public, as I said, and we, and we had an agreement with the mayor that we would put this off today, and as you know, you voted for a form, um, which we have not gotten to, to deal with yet, and that's what we're going to do now. We're going to, to read our form, just as you had an opportunity to read yours.
Well, you've had two opportunities to read yours, and nobody has made a single-
Oh, we, we decided-
Let me finish, if you don't mind.
Ms. Winger, if you could let Mr. McCormick finish?
The, uh, the point is that you've all had two opportunities. Nobody has made a single mention of the form except in very brief passing, and none of the questions that you've asked led to any conclusion with regard to any item on the evaluation form. And that's aside from the fact that the people who are making the evaluation, at least two of them, have no supervisory experience with Mr. Rappley to speak of, and certainly none to justify an evaluation.
Ms.-
Services all require a hundred and twenty days, even Louisiana requires ninety. So I think, uh, we'd, we'd be remiss to proceed with a, with a phony evaluation on these kind of terms.
Uh, Mr. McCormick, if, uh, you wouldn't mind, I, I am interested in hearing in the areas the council believes that, uh, Mr. Rappley has excelled in or requires additional work. I think we owe that to Mr. Rappley.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, if they'll get on with it, but this, this-
Perfect.
-inquisitional questioning that's going on is, is not an evaluation, it doesn't relate to the evaluation form, and it's, it serves no purpose and just a waste of time for us and for the public at large.
Well, and I agree that we've already gone through with, uh, all the questions, so there's no reason why we can't get to reading from the evaluation form. Since you've already done yours, Mr. Sanderson, would you like to proceed?
I have no comment at this time.
I, I'm sorry, what?
You don't have an evaluation?
I, I do, but I don't wish to publicize, I don't wish to go ahead and speak it out at this point, to talk about it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't understand.
Ms. Gonzalez, can you use your mic, please?
It's not a private evaluation, Mr. Rappley's asking it be public.
Go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
I believe what he's saying is it's a private evaluation and it goes for Mr. Rapley only.
I, I'm not aware of any requirement that I go ahead and, and share the evaluation here publicly, is that, is that a requirement?
Mr. Schnall, do you have an opinion on that? Are there, is council required to share the evaluation publicly?
That's up to each council member, but as, as was noted, Mr. Rapley has advised in the past, and I'll ask him if he still so advises, that he wants consideration of the personnel-related matters concerning his performance and any evaluation of his performance to be done in an open session of the council rather than in an executive session. If that is still the case, then the only opportunity for a council member to provide that information would be at this public forum or if a council member wanted to discuss it with Mr. Rapley separately, not during a meeting of the council, that is an option as well. But it's Mr. Rapley's option as the person who is the subject of this agenda item to advise whether he wants this to be done in the open session or in a closed executive session.
Mr. Rapley, can you give us your preference, please?
I maintain that I want to keep it in the public. Thank you.
Mr. Sanderson, would you like to proceed or?
Since I'm not required, I'm not going to go ahead and make any statements at this time.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez?
I would like to give him his evaluation directly, but not out in public.
But you don't have a choice. You don't have a choice.
Ms. Winger, it's your turn.
Okay. I do, I have filled out the form, which I will be reading. However, I would like to give, for the sake of the citizens, and when I say the citizens, I mean all of the citizens and not simply people who happen to be in this room tonight. This will be for the record. I'd like to give, first of all, several examples out of sixty. I've culled it down to about seven of deficiencies that I found and then I will go into the form. Beginning in May of 2018, Mr. Rapley claimed that he could not locate vital records, including the employee handbook and job descriptions, which he subsequently presented as his own work product.
Hold on one second, Ms. Winger, can I pause you for one quick second? With all due respect, Mr. Schnall, if this is in relation to the ongoing, let me take a step back. Is the EEOC complaint against the city still ongoing?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. If Ms. Winger has comments in relation to that, would she be allowed to make them at this time?
I'm not talking.
Ms. Winger, please.
It would be inappropriate for there to be a discussion concerning a pending complaint against the city during this portion of the meeting. This meeting is not about a former city employee, it's about the evaluation of Mr. Rapley. So I would ask all members of the governing body to respect that and to confine their comments to Mr. Rapley and not to others, other folks.
Certainly his interaction with employees could be considered something that we can discuss since he is the, he is the city manager, correct?
Yes, but, but again, please respect the fact that there is a pending complaint against the city and any discussion of any kind of a compending complaint against the city in this forum could be detrimental to the city's best interest.
I guess, in summary, as a good steward of the state.
I understand what you're saying.
Perfect. Okay, please, please continue leaving out anything that's pertaining to the EEOC case.
I'm not discussing the EEOC complaint. I've said that before, I didn't discuss it at the last meeting, I'm not discussing it now.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. This claim about the missing records was made repeatedly over several months, including in two open meetings from May to September 21, 2018, when Mr. Rapley asserted that both digital and hard copy files were missing and could not be located. Within days after I requested a police investigation, the detective assigned to the case.
Ms. Winger, Ms. Winger.
I'm not discussing the EEOC.
Okay.
I would, I would like you to let me finish.
I would like to get an opinion from Mr. Schnall since he's our legal counsel. Mr. Schnall, do you feel like this is too close to this or is this okay?
As long as Ms. Winger stays away from anything related to the former city secretary who filed these complaints, she can continue.
Okay, I'd ask if you hear anything that's of concern, that you let me know.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Winger, please proceed.
Okay. From May to September 21, 2018, when Mr. Rapley asserted that both digital and hard copy files were missing and could not be located, within days after I requested a police investigation, the detective assigned to the case questioned the city manager's administrative assistant about the missing records and was taken to a file cabinet in Mr. Rapley's office, which contained all or most of the records. Instead of admitting his capability, Mr. Rapley chose to scapegoat an employee. After, that's my first point. After reporting a zoning violation of a hospital operating on South Winston, a residential street, Mr. Rapley and the police chief visited the site and confirmed the unlawful use which, which they discovered also included building changes made without a permit. No action was taken and upon further inquiry, I was advised that the matter was being handled by the adjoining homeowner, who was adversely affected and who was forced by the city's inaction to hire his own attorney. Third point. Flooding in a property on Adobe following a moderate rainstorm, which is owned by a long-term and elderly resident, was determined to have been caused by a commercial building that backs up to Roundup. Since the first report in September 2018, city manager has repeatedly responded by email that he is meeting with building management, but no action has been taken to date by the commercial owner or by the city and the flooding continues every time there is a rainstorm. Report of an abandoned vehicle within a backyard on Zornia, an issue which has been resolved over the years by prior city managers in other locations within our city, has been left in place for months since it was reported in late February. The violation, as I reported, also involves parking on non-impervious cover, which should have incurred daily citations. On April 1st, the vehicle owner received a notice of violation and was given until April 7th to remove the vehicle, yet the vehicle is still there today. Repairs to the outside of City Hall to replace rotting wood were approved in September 2018, but no repairs began until April 2019, causing a disruption during early voting. Despite repeated requests, we still do not have a breakdown for the passport office costs, which council approved and which began operating on August 20th. The timeline for operation ends on June 30th, 2019, 11 days from now, and taxpayers do not know if it is profitable or unprofitable. Last year, after the annual audit, three members of council informed the city manager that we wanted to select a different auditing firm. That option had not been presented by the city manager, a standard procedure to council in a timely manner, and he stated that it was too late to change. Mrs. McLean, who was on council at the time, came up with the idea of telling the company that we wanted a different auditor within their firm and Mr. Rapley agreed to do so. Yet here we are with the same auditor as last year. That concludes my descriptions and I will now go into the form. Performance factors include job knowledge, leadership and management skills, professional quality, organizational skills, judgment and decision-making skills, and communication. I start with job knowledge. Has knowledge required to perform duties effectively strive to improve knowledge? Appears, my statement, appears to have little or no knowledge of Castle Hills' codes and ordinances and delays or fails to correct violations which are rampant throughout the city. Under leadership and management, sets and enforces standards, promotes a healthy organizational climate, this is the description of it, works well with others, fosters teamwork, displays initiative, self-confident, motivates subordinates. My evaluation. Rather than lead by example, Mr. Rapley makes excuses. This method has filtered down to the entire city staff. He has used police powers to oppress employees and council members and has encouraged others to use the government for individual advantage rather than for the common good. Professional qualities. Exhibits this intelligence, common sense, discipline, integrity, and honesty, accept personal responsibility, non-political, is fair and objective. In my evaluation. Acts politically by pitting one council member against another in his attempt to create discord amongst his employers. The same technique is used with employees to single out a scapegoat for his own deficiencies or failures. Has never accepted personal responsibility. His dishonesty is exhibited in false and repeated claims made over months that vital records were lost when in fact they were in a file cabinet in his office. Organizational skills. Plans, coordinates, schedules, and uses resources effectively, meets deadlines, schedules work for self and others equitably and effectively, anticipates and solves problems. My evaluation. Skill set is superficial, involves collecting ideas from the work of others and displaying them as his own. He creates charts and graphs on paper, which do not result in any work being done or in any results that may be criticized. This technique creates a filmy appearance of having done something without taking any action. He has failed to provide financial records in a timely manner, as noted in the audit, leaving council with no idea what funds are available from month to month. He has failed to provide council with minutes in a timely manner, allowing months to pile up and expecting council to remember and to read and approve volumes within days, three days. Meanwhile, six sets of minutes from 2018 have just been provided this month, with seven sets from 2018 still missing, and this is now June of 2019. Judgment and decision-making. Makes timely and accurate decisions, emphasizes logic in decision-making, retains composure in stressful situation, recognizes opportunity, and acts to take advantage of them, adheres to legal, safety, and occupational health requirements. My evaluation. Refuses to make decisions in most cases, instead claiming it is someone else's responsibility. Offloads personnel problems to attorneys, exhibiting no accountability as a manager. In stressful situations, he routinely calls in the police, who work for him, to handle personnel issues and disagreements with council members. Has refused to meet with council members without police protection, exhibiting a distrust for his employers. He takes no responsibility for solving, resolving problems and assigns outcomes to others. Communication skills. Listens, speaks, and writes clearly and effectively. My evaluation. Oral communication is almost entirely self-promotion. He repeats stories about experiences in other jurisdictions, replete with name dropping of persons he claims are important contacts, but who have never been of any assistance to Castle Hills in the past year and a half. In written communication, responses to requests for information are not timely and are not usually relevant to issues raised. They generally consist of excuses for not knowing relevant information. And I am submitting this for Mr. Rapley's personnel file, along with the evaluation that I did in October of last year after I had been on council for six months, but we never got to do that because Mr. McCormick didn't want to have an evaluation at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Winger.
I object to the idea that Ms. Winger has the authority to put anything in Mr. Rapley's personnel file. Mr. Rapley is supervised by the governing body, not by Mrs. Winger. If the governing body wants to put something in.
All, all evaluations.
Excuse me, I'm talking. The, the governing body has the power to do that by vote, but not by the solo decision of any member of council or by the mayor for that matter.
Mr. Schnall, do you have an opinion on that?
Typically, the chief executive officer of the city, which is the mayor, would make a determination along those lines, absent that, the governing body, as opposed to an individual member of the governing body.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Schnall. Mr. Gregory?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, if I may be long, but I'm the longest-serving member here and I've sat through eight city managers and I'm now in my 16th year. This all centers around expectation. Let me tell you what we had when I came here. We had a city manager who had what anybody today would call gravitas. He had presence, he understood what was going on, he had complete control of all the various administrative departments, and he was respected by everybody in the city regardless of what side they were on. He knew all the ordinances and the codes, knew them backwards and forwards.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have an objection. This is off-topic, we're not really here to compare.
Mr.?
It's directly on topic.
Hold on one second, Mr. McCormick.
We're not here to compare Mr. Rapley to any previous city manager. We're here to evaluate.
I object to the interruption.
Ms. Winger, Ms. Winger.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick, can you please finish your?
I raise a proper objection.
Can you please finish your objection?
And my objection is that I believe the discussion is wandering off-topic. We're now beginning to offer comparisons to another city manager, which is improper in the evaluation. We shouldn't be doing that. We should be evaluating Mr. Rapley on his own performance based on our direct observation and not on some idealized past fantasy of a, of a city manager.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Gregory, one second. Mr. Schnall, is there any issue with the way that Mr. Gregory has proceeded thus far?
Mr. Gregory needs to make an evaluation of the current city manager. If he wants to use an example of the performance of a prior city manager to do so, that's acceptable as long as he keeps this primarily on the topic of Mr. Rapley's performance as city manager.
Mr. Gregory, please proceed.
Thank you. This city manager knew the International Building Code. That's extremely important for the, was the city then, it's the city now. He lived within the city limits. He was, a city manager, and this is just not Mr. Shands, this is how, I'm talking about expectations, how they have slowly disintegrated over the last 16 years. The city manager always lived in Bear County. Well, that wasn't the case. We had one that would leave at the end of the week and go to his city, I think, out of the state almost and come back on Sunday night. He nev, a city manager never used to work at home. Now we accept that is a possibility, that city managers don't even have to show up, they can work at home. City managers used to be the decision-makers over the department heads. City managers had strong worth, ethics, ethics. City managers used to be at all major committee meetings and was informed through the meeting agenda and knew the applicable codes and ordinances. And, most importantly, previous city managers used to have a significant amount of experience being city manager. The city councils over the last 16 years have failed in this miserably. The last four city managers have had no experience at being a city manager. Now, Mr. Rapley has come here and he has his pluses and he has his minuses. I have spent, I figured up, between 50 and 150 hours with Mr. Rapley, going over all sorts of things pertaining primarily to finance in as much as that is my profession. I'm trying to help him wherever he might want. I've told him if he didn't want my advice, it didn't make any difference if he threw it in the trash can, he was a city manager. But I've given him a lot of time, which I don't know whether a lot of people have done. Now, I have found that Mr. Rapley is Johnny-on-the-spot on things that interest him. I've had many hours of going over the projects that I'm going to eventually, I hope, present to council, the big drainage problems of Banyan and Hermosa. He is, not Hermosa, but Mimosa. He's very, very knowledgeable as to those projects. He's very knowledgeable, he, he even, even did, he took the initiative and brought to me in a meeting how we can finance certain things just in case we run over on the money. He took the initiative on this. He's been interested in these programs. I think he has good ideas in these specific things, since they pertain to what I've been primarily dealing with him. I was impressed with that. His drawbacks are his slowness to respond. His drawbacks are his slowness to respond on things that he doesn't have exact interest in. A classic case to me was I was talking to a citizen here in the city in April who had a significant problem with his sewer line hooking up to the main sewer line on his street, it was broken and he believed the city was responsible. He asked me, please go and be my advocate to the city manager, I need to, we need to settle this out or I'm going to sue the city. I told Mr. Rapley this, I told the person's name previously. I got a call back 10 days, two weeks from Mr. Rapley, do you have a better telephone number for this gentleman? My response to him was, he's dead. He had died. Now, we're not San Antonio, and you can't, I mean, San Antonio, you can't expect to get an immediate response, but you should at least get back to somebody within a day saying, I can't reach somebody. It's, but that goes to the interest thing. We have, we really, then, well, let me go to the, the financing. I took a schooling at the Texas Municipal League in December that all city managers and finance people should take, and I came back, they had strongly emphasized the city needs a strong finance director. I told Mr. Rapley then, in December, we needed a finance director, we're now in Ju-, June, still no finance director. Now, I have found subsequent information in the last several days, that it is very difficult to find a finance director because the job market is very tight. Council may want to go down the list on how to change that, but I understand that, and I assume Mr. Rapley is content, going to continue to try to find somebody as quickly as possible who is, who is worthy of the position. I do believe that Mr. Rapley, we have $6 million of projects coming up. 18 years ago, Mr. Shands would go out and check every single project, he knew every inch of every road. Mr. Giorotta would probably, to use his words, Mr. Shands was everywhere. Mr. Shands was interested in that. Now, Mr. Rapley takes a different point of, and, and I'm not, I'm not jumping on him for this point, it's just a different point of view. He takes a point of views, I'm not an engineer, I shouldn't have to do it, but we know people who are going to oversee it, and I trust in them, and if they don't do it right, we can go after them. That's a different point of view. I, I may not agree with it, but it is certainly a legitimate point of view. I think this is frankly one of the most, this situation of using the city manager as a political football, I think is horrible. And it's shameful for a lot of people who are out there who've done it, and shameful for a lot of people who've done it on both sides for whatever reason. Most people couldn't care less. And this, this man, he could be as dumb as dirt or as brilliant as Einstein, and the way the environment is in the city the last two or three years, I'm not really sure what, what is going on half the time. I'm just looking at his performance. Our expectations for a city manager today have dramatically shrunk, and yet the salary has, has doubled. So, I don't know what council is going to do in the future, I don't know what this is council going to do, but you better get your bloody act together and have specifics, get experience and understanding, and help somebody if they need help. You know, don't try to have somebody to fail, but help them if they need help. That's what I've tried to do, and I hope in the future, when I'm long gone of this council, these council members will do the same. Thank you.
What is your evaluation?
I just did it. My evaluation, my evaluation, my evaluation will be in my vote.
Okay, I would like to add that, it's my understanding that a proper evaluation requires at least three months of spending time with somebody to properly evaluate them.
Unlike what you did.
Well, Ms. Winger, the difference with what I did is I was presented with a case-
It was what?
I was presented with information-
I see.
From legal counsel, providing me background-
Well, we've all read that.
Okay, well, as I was saying, I believe that you need at least three months unless you're provided with something that shows that there's a substantial issue. And since I'm not in a position to have spent that kind of time with Mr. Rapley, I've chosen not to fill out the evaluation at this time. I do believe that Mr. Rapley has worked very hard, given the obstacles put in place by this council and last, one of which was making the finance director a department head so that he would not have the ability to hire them. He had Ms. Fiegans, which was interested in a position, but once council took that power away from Mr. Rapley, he could not hire the finance director. So, I completely agree with Mr. Gregory that we do need a finance director, and Mr. Rapley did want to hire a finance director, but when you take the power away from him, I, I-
We didn't.
I under-, I, I don't understand the expectation.
Who took the power away?
Council. Council made the finance director a department head so that they would have control over that position.
That's always been the case, that, that we always have, have, have to approve all department heads.
Well, I know, understand that, but finance director was not a department head-
Yeah, but what's the difference?
And then you went, and you changed, you passed an ordinance so that it would be considered a department head.
Okay, but that, but that's the only, that's the only change, the point is that if, it was just-
There's also the hiring freeze.
Well, but that ended, that ended a long time ago.
I understand that, Ms. Winger, but the issue is you're sending a message of instability to the employees, and these people depend on his paycheck to pay their bills, their house, their car, their livelihood, and if they don't have the stability, they're going to leave, like has happened. And that puts Mr. Rapley in a very difficult situation to do his job, which is another example of the hamstringing that I talked about. That, that's my personal opinion. That being said, Mr. Schnall, I believe that Mr. Rapley does have an opportunity to address the comments, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Rapley, are you prepared to do so at this time?
Sure. I'll start with Mr. Douglas. I've had a lot of meetings with him, and, and I've taken into consideration a lot of your input and expertise, especially in the financial area. From the standpoint that I've been many meetings with you of late, and times of hours, you've had positive comments about my work, my city manager capabilities, and that I've learned from my position, and I'm just going to make that clear, you had made those comments to me a number of times in the last few months. Ms. Winger, the file that was found in my office was put there, it wasn't there before that. I went to the police chief to say, this was not here. That was verified by Janet Thielen through a statement that that file was not previously there, and it was placed there.
I'd like to respond to that, Mr. Rapley. I'm not talking about, and now you're bringing up the EEOC thing, I'm not talking about the two files that you claimed were found in your credenza, I'm talking about an entire file cabinet that was sitting next to your desk. It was, all of the files were there. Nobody placed them there, they were there.
Those files had different categories, they were work product of different city managers over the years. They weren't specific to a, one city manager. And then the files were recovered electronically on a previous city manager's laptop or desktop because that person didn't put them over on the server like they were supposed to. So, again, I was correct about where these files were in, in relationship to your complaint.
Not true. That's not what-
And, and, and let me speak also, as well as one, one point you made on roundup over here on the drainage. I've been working with that gentleman, he's actually agreed to do his part. I sent you, and, and again, I'm going to say that I think I do a pretty good job of communicating with you as council. I provide you a monthly report of critical issues, department updates, permitting, and yesterday, I told you that I sent my report, that I met with the owner who's willing to do what he needs to do and pay for his side to improve that drainage based on the engineering study that was done a few months prior. He did also say that this was brought up to him in 2016, and that the engineer and then city manager weren't very cooperative to work with, and thus he didn't move forward anymore. He's very open to fixing this, and so we are getting quotes, as I mentioned here in this report, we need one more quote, so we can have three quotes to do this work here in the next few weeks. And I did put statuses on all of the positions needed. In December, I needed to find a city secretary, a fire chief, and a finance director. Also, part of that is prioritizing it, I needed to find a city secretary, which I filled in April. I selected in April a fire chief, who's here to be confirmed, who came last month, well-qualified, and then a finance director where I had two applicants ready to meet with Councilman Gregory at the end of April as treasurer, I, I thought it would be a good process for him to interview them, and both applicants said, one, I'm staying with my city, the other found another job. I reposted it, and I got one applicant who was unqualified, and I've since then have reposted it. Now, as far as the reconciliation, which is continuing, which when I walked in the door was seven months behind, Ms. Fiegans, who's here to speak on any matter related to the audit, because she was here almost full-time, she worked on all of the budgeting and expenses and accounting related to this audit, so she's here, but she's also come in on the weekends and at night to help with reconciliation, to get us so we don't get behind.
And, Ms., Mr. Schnall, is it appropriate to field the point of order?
I think so.
Ms. Scott, your point of order, please.
Just so everyone can hear me, item G of the resolution that was just passed states that by majority vote of the city council, members present or person, persons in attendance may be allowed to speak prior to, during consideration and discussion of agenda item by the city council. I would like to respectfully request the city council to vote to allow me to speak and read my two-page evaluation of Mr. Rapley, because I did work with him from the first day he was hired until the end of April. Thank you.
Didn't you read your resolution last time, your evaluation last time?
No, ma'am, I did not get a chance to.
Well, again, we've just changed the rules.
Mr. Schnall.
The rules has changed, allow Ms. Scott to make the request, it takes a majority vote of the council to permit Ms. Scott, or anyone else present for that matter, to speak on this item.
Perfect, thank you. All in favor of hearing Ms. Scott's regarding her evaluation of Mr. Rapley? All opposed? Motion fails. Okay, do we have any other comments regarding Mr., or actually, Mr. Schnall, will Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Gonzalez be required to give Mr. Rapley a copy of their evaluation?
The, the evaluation is a tool to be used to help Mr. Rapley and to help the governing body, but we cannot compel a member of the governing body to provide him with their evaluation. They're free to do that, they're free not to do that.
Got you, thank you, sir. Mr. Rapley, did you have any more comments?
Mayor, I would just like to say that, in my opinion, from the standpoint of trying to be transparent with the council over the last, you know, during my tenure, in providing and communicating with my reports, trying to put plans together like the CIP, putting together a budget last year that was more transparent than any other budget put together here, all of this was utilized with my skills and experience. Part of it was, I've had obstruction after obstruction in trying to do these things. I haven't had the ability to hire like I have because of hiring freezes. I've had positions taken out of the budget, which are crucial to this department, especially administration for a number of areas. And so, I have not had a council to holistic, that worked with me on a cooperative level over a certain period of time.
Okay, if that is it, we have citizens to be heard?
No, because we don't anymore.
Excuse me?
We already discussed that before, we don't have that now, we're simply voting on the evaluation.
Mr. Schnall, Ms. Winger does not want to hear from the citizens, is, do we not have to?
Because we already heard from them, you agreed to that when we tabled it.
I did not agree, you told me, and I said, okay, I'd hear you.
But, but nonetheless, we, as Mr. Schnall just said, we now have new rules.
Mr. Schnall, if you can give me a decision on how to proceed? Yes, sir, no problem.
My recollection is that under the new rules, Ms. Scott's request to allow to be, to allow to speak was the option that was available to the council, to allow members of the public to speak on this item, and, and that the adoption of the resolution in regard to citizen participation limits citizen participation to matters of, under citizens to be heard or on, in public hearings. So, there would not be a way for citizens to be heard because of the adoption of the item, the resolution under item nine, unless the council wishes to reconsider Ms. Scott's request that would allow Ms. Scott and/or others to speak to the council on this item.
Okay, so, everybody that's signed up to speak is not allowed unless approved by council, is that correct?
That would be correct, based upon the adoption of the resolution under item nine.
Okay, perfect. I would assume that we had some people signed up to speak, I apologize that you're not able Now, I mean, I don't have a lot of clarification on how to proceed now because of the way that this agenda item was written.
You need a motion.
A motion for?
I would like to move for immediate termination for cause.
Okay, we have a first?
I object to the consideration.
I'm sorry.
There's been no discussion of cause.
We had a second by Ms. Winger, Ms. Gonzalez.
Just outlined it.
I'm sorry?
Ms. McCormick, your objection?
My objection is that there has been no notice of cause, as is required in state law, to give notice to the, to the city manager. If he's going to be considered for dismissal for cause, I think he's required to receive a proper notice as to what charges might be brought against him, since what we have here-
I just read them.
Excuse me, I'm talking, you can keep quiet for a minute.
Mr. McCormick, a little bit of decorum, please. Please proceed.
The, this, this action, if it's for cause, is quasi-punitive in nature, and to that extent, he should receive a proper notice of what the charges might be. None have been brought up yet, no charges have been made, there's no claim that has been brought forward that Mr. Rapley has violated any of the items listed in the statute or in his contract, both of which would apply, I think, in this case. So, I think that, that the, the motion for, for consideration of that particular item fails for lack of notice in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, for lack of notice in accordance with rule 22.071, and that the, the matter can't be considered at this meeting. If we want to proceed, the, the original motion was, we were going to proceed for a, a vote on termination for lack of, lack of confidence. That's the motion that was on the table, that was the motion I made, it's improper for this motion to be now brought, intervening in the motion that I raised earlier.
Mr. Schnall?
For reasons other than what Mr. McCormick said, my opinion is that Ms. Winger's motion to terminate for cause is out of order pursuant to section 22.077A of the Texas Local Government Code, which reads as follows, "The governing body of the municipality may remove a municipal officer for incompetency, corruption, misconduct, or malfeasance in office after providing the officer with due notice and an opportunity to be heard." To the extent Mr. McCormick, Mr. McCormick's objection relates to notice, I agree with that, plus the, the generic statement that was made in the motion to immediately term, to immediately terminate for cause does not fit with the terms incompetency, corruption, misconduct, or malfeasance in office. No specification has been given as to Mr. Rapley meeting any of those criteria, and he certainly has not been given proper notice of any such activity. I will also state that it would be my opinion that a motion tonight to remove Mr. Rapley based upon a lack of confidence would be out of order because the agenda does not speak to that, and the prior council decision to terminate a city manager for lack of confidence had specifically stated in the agenda item that the, was a possibility that the former city manager might be removed based upon a lack of confidence under section 22077B of the Local Government Code. The agenda for this meeting does not have that language, and there are decisions from the courts that have made it clear that in regard to personnel matters, agenda items need to be very specific. And I would therefore suggest that neither the motion Councilman Winger made, nor the motion that Councilman McCormick suggested would be in order at tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Do we have any motions that might be in order? Do we have any motions that might be in order?
We have the item be tabled indefinitely.
No.
We have a motion by Mr. McCormick to table the item indefinitely. Is there a second? Do we have a second? Motion fails for lack of second.
Then I move we table it till next month.
Okay, we have a motion to table the evaluation till next month. First by Mr. McCormick, do we have a second?
I'll second with discussion.
A second by Mr. Gregory for discussion, please proceed.
No discussion on a motion to table, mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Gregory, but Robert's Rules says that motions to table do not have an opportunity for discussion. They are not debatable.
Okay, does that second still stand, Mr. Gregory? The second does not stand. So, I'll ask again, do we have a second for Mr. McCormick's motion to table till next Motion dies for lack of second. Ms. Winger?
I'm, I'm proceeding with my motion. I do believe, as I've stated, that we have a very, very serious situation, that is a total corruption of the, of the city at this time with staff.
Please, okay.
I outlined it, I did, so I'm sorry if Mr. Schnell didn't hear it, but we have, what is essentially, a police state here because council members, excuse me, are being investigated for no reason based on Mr. Rapley's disagreement with certain people. This cannot go on, this is extremely unhealthy, it is very disturbing to the majority of citizens, and I stand by my motion.
Okay, Mr. Schnell, I would assume that operating outside of the scope, given your recommendation, may potentially open council members to individual liability, is that correct?
It not only would do that, it also creates a, a potential that any action taken would be void. Mayor, at this time, I think it might be appropriate, because the agenda does specifically say that the council may have a possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney. I would respectfully ask that the mayor close the, announce the date and time, close the open session, so that the council can go into a brief executive session, consultation with attorney only, no discussion of the merits of Mr. Rapley's work or his performance, rather consultation and advice from the city attorney in regard to matters relevant to the agenda item.
Okay, as per Mr. Schnell, it is Tuesday, June eleventh, eight-twenty-two, we're going to go into executive session.
No.
Sorry, Ms. Casey, we're in executive session now.
And that's eight-twenty-two, if I got that right?
Douglas, don't ever. We should do it there, but it's up to the mayor.
Thank you very kindly. It's nice to talk to you on a friendly basis. I'm just fine with that, how about, how about an orange whiskey?